Please turn off your cell phones and pagers. We appreciate your participation this afternoon and your cooperation. All right, if we're ready to proceed, we can rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our moment of silent meditation this afternoon, I would like us all to reflect on the people of Japan and the serious concerns and deprivation that they are suffering with. So we'll take a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Calling the roll, Mr. Brady.
President.
Mr. Manah.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
President.
There is a quorum.
All right, thank you. We have an opportunity at this point for public comment related to the agenda. Is there any public comments?
Madam President, we just have one person who has signed in for public comment unrelated to the agenda.
All right, we'll take it at the end of the meeting. All right, is there a motion for the meaning of March 8th have been circulated among the members? Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Or are there any conditions or corrections? If there are no additions or corrections, is there a moment to approve?
Madam President.
Yes.
I so move to approve the minutes.
Second.
By Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Conwell. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Does it pose? All right, then it's approved. Is Mr. Fitzgerald on his way? Should we send a subpoena for him? I do not believe we can proceed with item eight. We needed to hear from Mr. Fitzgerald on this matter. Is there any objection to moving down to item nine for a discussion of regional collaboration?
Objection.
No objection. All right, Mr. Juris. Yeah, you can sit or you can magically goes up.
Thank you. Council President Connolly and members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to come here to tell you a little bit about the Department of Regional Collaboration, what I've been doing as the Director of Regional Collaboration. For those of you who don't know, I know most of you and have met with most of you.
Excuse me, Mr. Juris, we do need you to speak into the microphone because this is being recorded. So you might, I don't know if you want to go up a little higher with the platform.
What I thought I would do today is to give you a little bit of background on myself and then tell you what I've been doing in about the first six weeks that I've been serving as Director of Regional Collaboration and the very interesting information that I've been able to glean from the stakeholders that I've spoken to around the county. I was born here in Cleveland in the Collinwood area, grew up in Euclid.
Did you know Danny Green?
I live very near to Danny Green, actually, and I know his sons. But I was trained as an attorney, came back to Cleveland in 1983 to practice law at the Law Firm of Vardan Haddon. And one year into that, I went to serve on a leave of absence with Cleveland Tomorrow, which was an organization of the chief executive officers of the Cleveland area, working on economic development. And I worked under Richard, the late Richard Shatten, who was a real visionary for economic development in this area. I served on the Euclid City Council and then was in the state legislature for nine and a half years, serving with Mr. Brady and Mr. Miller. And most recently was serving as Government Relations Director for the Department of Development in Columbus. When Mr. Fitzgerald campaigned for county executive, he made regional collaboration a priority and said that we needed to, as communities, start working together and also to see how we can deliver services and run our governments more efficiently. And made a commitment to that by appointing a Director of Regional Collaboration. Now, when you talk about regional collaboration, you'll talk to many different people and you get 100 different ideas of what it involves. People have talked about regionalism, first on the level of as an economic force. It's not the city of Cleveland, it's not Cuyahoga County, it's a region that is an economic force. That's one level of talking about regional collaboration. But there's another level, which is how do we interact as communities? How do we share resources? How do we collaborate on projects so that we can more efficiently deliver services? There is a new urgency to figure out how to do that and deliver these services more efficiently for three reasons. Number one, the recession has forced revenues down in local communities, so all the local communities in Cuyahoga County are hurting for revenues. Secondly, we were anticipating a cut in the local government fund of about 15 percent. The governor at 1:00 produced his budget, and it's my understanding that the cut in the local government fund in fiscal year 12 will be 25 percent, and in fiscal year 13 will be 50 percent. Those are dramatic impacts on local governments. I spoke to Mayor Sibenech in Euclid, and he told me that a 15 percent cut for Euclid would mean about $430,000 in lost revenue for one year. So if you imagine that that's up to 25 percent or 50 percent, we're talking about cuts in excess of a half a million dollars for a city the size of Euclid. There's also in the budget, I understand, an acceleration of some tax policy changes. They're currently, the local governments and the school districts are receiving certain reimbursements from the state that are supposed to offset losses caused by electric deregulation and the adoption of the cat tax. I understand that they're going to accelerate the ending of those payments so that the local governments will be hurt by that as well. In addition, they're talking about ending the estate tax. Using Euclid as an example, they anticipate about $1 million a year in revenues from the estate tax. If that goes away, further need to collaborate. So there's great urgency on this. And these are really trends that are being forced by the national economy and the drop in revenues. If you look at what's happening with Governor Christie in New Jersey, Governor Cuomo in New York, they're forcing local governments to collaborate because the money just isn't there on the state level, it's not going to be coming down to the local level. We have 59 jurisdictions in Cuyahoga County, that's a lot of jurisdictions. There's a lot of opportunity to try to do things cooperatively. Now, there was no game plan when I was appointed to this position. There's no definition of a region out there, there's no definition of what a regional collaboration director does. So what I did in my first few weeks on the job is to go out and reach out to the people who I thought in this community were leaders on this issue. And we're blessed in Cuyahoga County to really have a lot of people who have thought a great deal about collaborative efforts. I started with people like Tony Coyne of the City Planning Commission, Bob Jaquay over at the Gunn Foundation, Judy Ross and Marty Sanati, who were on the transition team for the county, talking about economic development and collaborations. There are politicians taking lead like Nina Turner and Mike Foley and even Peter Lawson-Jones, who tried under the previous administration to work on regionalism ideas. There are academic people like Ned Hill and Tom Byer over at Cleveland State, John Hornbeak at Kent State. There are people in the foundations like Dave Abbott, Bob Jaquay and others. There is the nonprofits like the Fund for Economic Future with Brad Whitehead, Chris Ronain out at University Circle, Inc., and many of the mayors of Cuyahoga County. I've spoken to Mayor Wheelow, Mayor Sutherland in Bay Village, Mayor Cluff in Westlake, Mayor Patton in Fairview Park, Mayor Akers in Pepper Pike, numbers of the mayors. And you realize that there's a huge spectrum when you talk about collaborative projects. It goes everywhere, literally, from sharing an animal warden to cooperating with Pittsburgh. So everything in between is kind of potentially on the agenda. What I have found is that you begin with talking at the most basic level about how do we share services between communities on such things as whether it be, can we share back office services, a payroll director, a human resources person? Can we have our animal warden serve several different communities? Can we have somebody doing park maintenance in more than one community? Can we do bulk purchasing? Can we band together and buy products? There's already the sourcing office which does this as a nonprofit. To what extent can we do that? Can communities on a contract basis share services? In other words, can the city of Cleveland plow the streets of East Cleveland and save the overhead costs that East Cleveland has by doing it on a contract basis? Now, most of you know that there's state law that prohibits them currently from doing that. It was heartening to see Mayor Jackson speak about that obstacle to collaboration in his State of the City address. And I actually went up to Governor Kasich afterwards because he attended that speech, and I said, you know, we're working on that, and this is an obstacle, but you could roll something into the budget. And he said, we're already thinking about doing that. And he had his chief policy guy calling me and said they're hoping to roll that into the budget. And Speaker Batchelder had spoken about that as well, saying that makes sense to allow cities to collaborate on a wider range of projects. So you have the opportunity for cities to contract with each other. Then on the county level, you have potentially the opportunity for the county to share some of the services that it supplies. For example, we have a web design group in the county that potentially provide that service to smaller communities so that they don't have to go out and contract with someone on that. We have health benefits on the county level that are offered to cities in Cuyahoga County, and I think three or four cities are signed up on that program, and it has the potential to expand as well. When I talk to people, what I hear a lot of is you can push the needle a little bit with the kind of back office services, animal warden stuff. It's important to get communities to cooperate because, as John Hornbeak of Kent State says, there are two indicators that will shoot 100 percent predictive of whether communities will continue to cooperate. Number one is pressure, budget pressure from on top, which we certainly will have with the cuts in the local government fund, but also a history of cooperating. So it's baby steps. You start off cooperating locally, and it gives you the potential and the opportunity to collaborate on bigger things. The other, what I'm beginning to realize, too, is that there are certain areas that are most ripe for savings. Because the mayors will tell you that 60 to 80 percent of their budgets are involved in police, fire and services. One of the, Jerry Chaykin, who's up in Shaker Heights, was Assistant Administrator for the county, said, why does every city need to have a sewer jet? I mean, it's $250,000. Why don't we cooperate on sharing those type of services or the video equipment that you send down into the sewer systems? The fire trucks, there was, one of the mayors told me, we spent $750,000 on a fire truck. We have one building in our small city that requires a hook and ladder, but we bought one because we're a separate jurisdiction. Meanwhile, we've got the city of Cleveland around us that has many of those trucks and could provide that service. But because there's all these different municipalities, they're duplicating infrastructure. The city of East Cleveland may have snowplows that they have to buy and take care of and maintain when they could do it on a much cheaper, with a contract basis with the city of Cleveland. Those opportunities exist. Now, probably one of the most fruitful areas for cooperation would be in fire services. Several communities are already doing joint dispatch, but there's a great effort going on in the West Shore communities to look at, can we consolidate our fire services and save those huge overhead costs? And they've actually had a very substantial study done about the feasibility of doing that, and they just last week voted, Councilman Greenspan was at the meeting, to continue exploring joint training and potentially joint service district. That's exciting. Now, what's the obstacles to these things? There's huge obstacles to these collaborations. You're all politicians, you know what, many of you have served in local governments, you know that you have, and one of the things I learned in the state legislature is a lot easier to kill something than it is to pass something. And you get a resident or politician standing up and saying, this will make you less safe, this will not save money, and people start backing off it, particularly if you're on a city council and you're not involved in the process from the get-go. Mayors will tell you the same thing, they'll say, I'm not going to move forward unless I know that this is going to save me money. But they also need ammunition if they're going to respond, even if they believe that it will save them money and be safer and more efficient, they need ammunition to go back to these, to the council people, the residents, the unions, and say, look, this is a good idea for our community. Excuse me. So what that leads to is the need for seed money. Because oftentimes you will need a study done or an analysis done to show, will this save money? Can we, as a practical matter, link things together? Mayor Wheelow talked about sharing some financial services with another community and found out that their computers were not compatible, and they needed $150,000 to get over that hurdle, and it kind of killed the deal right there. But doing this analysis, and it may cost $10,000 to $100,000 plus, the study that was done on the West Shore cost in excess of $100,000. Most communities don't have that money readily available. What they've done in the past is gone to foundations, they've gone to the state government, had some grants that were available, or they'll go to nonprofits like the Fund for Economic Future, which also had Efficient Government Now grants available. But over the long run, I think part of the problem you will see is that the foundations and the nonprofits either don't have the capacity or don't have the willingness to provide that kind of seed funding on an ongoing basis. One concept that we are exploring that Mr. Fitzgerald ran on as a candidate was the development of an economic development fund, which would, the concept being is you draw in a source of revenue, potentially the casino revenues, and you issue bonds and get a fund together that could be used for different purposes. One of those purposes could be the seeding of these collaborative projects. And that's an exciting prospect that we're exploring now, to give communities an ongoing source of revenues for these seed projects. When you talk to the mayors, another thing that they will say, I had a mayor tell me this the other day, we'd love to collaborate, we have the urgency now, we've explored it in the past, there was some mild interest in it, but now we're going to get focused on it, but we need to know how to do it. So there's a great need, I think, for a playbook. What are the steps you need to collaborate? How do you go about a collaboration? What questions do you need to ask? What sort of statutory or charter amendments will you need? What kind of consultants do you have to have? What kind of analysis needs to be done? So all those things are in the mix. Let me just close by speaking about one other level of collaboration that is out there, and that is the collaborations that are occurring in the multi-county area. The Regional Prosperity Initiative is one example, Sustainable Communities is another. And these are talking about more long-term issues, such as land use planning. One of the issues that we've always had, and I know Dale and Dan, we talked about this when we were back in the state legislature, which is the region's population isn't changing, but we continue to expand out, and every time we build an interchange, we draw development outward and we draw people outward. So how do you, you know, is it efficient to duplicate infrastructure? Obviously, it's not, but how do you address that challenge? So the Regional Prosperity Initiative, on their agenda is land use planning on a regional basis, but also revenue sharing, which is another extremely difficult issue, because some people just say it's dead on arrival. We don't want to even discuss it, because there are some communities that obviously win on revenue sharing and other communities that feel that they will lose. So those are broader initiatives, and I think it's important that we, as a county, collaborate or participate in those discussions and explore with other communities what can be done in terms of economic development planning, revenue sharing planning, land use planning, but realizing that in the short run, the most profitable areas for collaboration are more likely these types of inter-community collaborations, communities done between the county and the cities, and collaborations done by districts. And we hope that we can push that ball forward. And I think there's a lot of people, as I talked to, especially to the foundations, I spoke to somebody from the Fund for Economic Future and somebody from the Gunn Foundation today, and both are extremely interested in these types of initiatives and promoting them, and they're very appreciative that the county has now put a focus through Executive Fitzgerald on regional collaboration and made it a priority for the county. So that's basically what I've been doing for the past six weeks, and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, Ed. This is an interesting discussion, obviously, and we could have this for a long time. But you had mentioned in one situation about a small community, obviously it was a small community that needed one fire truck because they had one building that they needed the hook and ladder for. Has anybody gone so far, and I don't mean us, but like when you were talking to these folks, has anybody gone so far as to discuss the possibility that maybe being annexed by the city of Cleveland would make more sense than, might at this point make sense?
Yes, and Chairman, Representative Brady, I was surprised to find that there are communities that are actually talking about that. Some of them are talking about collaborations they don't want to make public, but people are open to that. I think that there are two levels that those discussions can occur. There are situations where there may be a weaker community that doesn't have a lot of assets, that's depending perhaps on the county sheriff to do some patrols and other cities to assist on it. At the current time, they don't have as much to offer to the neighboring communities, so that's more problematic. But I think there are other communities that are healthier, where the economics of each city is comparable, that they're willing to explore those things. And I think that that's, I've had more than a couple of people mention that as mayors. I think, though, that you have huge political challenges, because, you know, anytime you raise something like that, there's going to be a lot of people who'll get up and say that's a bad idea, and that community needs us more than we need them. So it's a delicate process, but it's also one that, given the multiplicity of jurisdictions just in Cuyahoga County, it makes sense, but you're going to need some leadership on a local level and some pretty courageous mayors.
Just as a follow-up, I realize how controversial and difficult that would be. I think the latest census, you know, when you really, when you look at those numbers and you see so many suburban communities, and we do have so many, where there may be 10,000, 15,000 souls in each of these communities with all their own city councils and mayors and trying to do all these things for themselves, areas that are smaller than city wards, which are getting smaller every day. It just, you know, I don't know what our role is in that exactly, but it just seems if we're talking about regionalism, that in the case of some of these smaller suburbs that merging, it's their business, of course, but it seems to me that that would be one of the more rational ways to go about any real regionalism. And then finally, the big elephant in the room is school systems.
Right. And I had a person come up to me last week when I spoke at a gathering, and they said, I came from Virginia, we're from a fairly big county, and there was one school district in the county. I don't know how many we have in Cuyahoga County, but it's more than one. And around the state, we have maybe more than 1,000 school districts. So you have, you're right, it just doesn't make sense. But it's, but those realities developed, they evolved from the desire to have home rule at a time when they could afford home rule, and now it's becoming more problematic. So, but now you're trying to put the toothpaste back in the model, and it's hard.
Mr. Schron.
Thank you, appreciate the comments, thank you, Madam Chairman. The announcement today of the five police departments that were looking to create a single police department, I thought that was kind of exciting when you saw that today between.
Which, I didn't see that.
Oh, I think it was Shaker and Beechwood, and a few were looking at exploring into a single, unified, and even had created a new name for it, so I don't remember specifically what the name was, but it was a, it was kind of a unique sounding name out there. So I thought that was, that was on that same step you're talking about. I think also, having been on a small school board, I think that that is an area where you walk gingerly, I think, as far as when school boards are out there, because the trend in schools is actually to go smaller in size than it is to go larger, because they found that, if you look at what's going on and how they're even trying to break down Cleveland Public Schools into small vignettes with various focused activities, because they found the large contiguous of schools did not effectively, wasn't as effective because of the small focused attention. So I think we need to figure out, if there are discussions like that, how do you get the better education out there on the small versus large? And again, I think with Dr. Sanders' program that he had put forth, the transition was to actually break it down into small schools out there, from Schools of the Arts and the STEM academies and Max Hayes and so on and so forth out there. But my other question was in regards to, where has regionalism been found to be the most effective? Where are the best practices? Where have we gone into to find the research? What communities, what locales, what counties, what cities? Can you give us a background as far as what your research has found specifically where regionalism has been a benefit in the country?
Yes, President Connolly, Councilman Schron, there are different models, and some of which probably aren't doable in the short run. For example, Minneapolis is often pointed out as a real model of regional collaboration, where there's tax sharing over the metro region. But some people will tell you that that was done by the state legislature at a time that almost that the local communities were not really that aware of what was going on there and might have objected if they had a better understanding. It's worked out very well for them, but it would be probably difficult, some of the people I've spoken to said that would be extremely difficult to achieve here. And plus, there may be constitutional issues. I talked to Gene Krebs at the Greater Ohio, and he said when they did an analysis in Legislative Services, they found that there were at least three grounds on which that type of approach in Ohio might be considered unconstitutional. There were other areas, I believe Louisville, Indianapolis have explored metro government, which is, again, a much more long-term proposal. Now, in terms of the collaborations, I'm looking for best practices. I know that John Hornbeak at Kent State is doing an analysis of the projects that are coming out of the Efficient Government Now program and trying to analyze which of those works best and try to develop some sort of guidelines as to what works. And I think that there are also projects that have taken place in New York where they've been working on collaboration. Whether they've been successful or not, I think remains to be seen, because they've been working on it for a long time. I'm looking for models, I haven't found a whole lot of doing what, exactly what we are trying to do here, but I'm going to continue to look into that. I was talking to Chris Thompson this afternoon over at the Fund for Economic Future, and he said that there are some models out there, so I'm going to try to explore those.
Mr. Juris, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned the number of mayors that you'd spoken with, and I don't know if I missed it or not, but I didn't hear one African-American mayor that you met with. I know there's an association of African-American mayors, they meet over in my district somewhere, and I was just wondering, had you been in touch with them?
The only one I've spoken to is probably Mayor Norton of East Cleveland, who is actually very positive about this. He's one of the more forward-thinking mayors in terms of that. I've spoken, I have not, I've spoken more to the bigger city mayors, I did speak to Chris Warren with the city of Cleveland, I have not spoken to Mayor Jackson yet.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
But I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I have Mayor Nash in Highland Hills or Highland Heights, and Mayor Smith in Woodmere, and Mayor Smith in North Randall, and so we have some smaller cities, so, I mean, they have some very unique problems, situations.
Ideally.
And Mayor Hall in Warrensville.
Right, and I think North Randall is an area that probably is.
Yeah, it's really, it's a very grave situation in North Randall.
And there are, I'm trying to get out and meet as many as I can. I've started with probably the bigger ones, but I'm meeting with the mayor Glenn Willow at his request next week, so I will continue to reach out. And I have gone to the Mayors and Managers Association.
Yeah, if you want me to arrange the, with, I know, I think Mayor Hall is the chair of the Mayor's Association.
I'd be happy to speak to them.
All right. And then the other question, I just wanted to know, how do you see yourself fitting in with the Economic Development Commission and the Development Director? How do you see yourself interfacing with them?
I think they're interlinked. I think they have a broader, a little bit broader of an agenda, but I do, I know Mr. Bender's will be coming on in April, I'm looking forward to working with him. I'd worked with Dorothy Bonnick back when I was at Cleveland Tomorrow, going back to 1984. I think that the efforts that we're making, both in the collaboration side, but also as you begin to talk about the other aspect of regional collaboration, which is kind of the, you know, exploring non-poaching agreements or notification procedures. I know that Dayton has certain protocols that when a company, for example, if you take the American Reading situation, that if a company in Brooklyn wants to go talk to Beechwood, that there will, before the mayor of Beechwood talks to that company, they will notify the mayor of Brooklyn and say, look, this is, I just wanted you to know, so that if you wanted to put together a package. So I think that working on those types of things promotes the economic development. And there will be other opportunities, I think, to participate on collaborations that will spur economic development. Because one of the things I did not mention to you is that, when I spoke to Chris Ronain over at University Circle, and he says, don't look at it just as collaborations between local governments, you can collaborate, the county can collaborate with institutions, for example, in University Circle, and you have museums there, you have hospitals there, you have nonprofits there. We could collaborate on place development, activity centers, and do something along those lines, or work on the riverfront. There's potential, Paul Alcinous at the County Planning Commission said, you know, you can collaborate with businesses that are doing exciting things and have a base, there's some potential base here in Cleveland. So there are opportunities for collaborations that go beyond intergovernmental opportunities. But as I said, as I began, there's a huge spectrum here, and you have to kind of try to figure out what best fits.
Any other questions? I really appreciate your comments, and I would think, I mean, thank you on behalf of council, and I think that probably three to six months, we'd like to have an update of what's going on, what will call you back, and, you know, have you give us an update of what progress you've made.
Anytime, and I know I spoke to one of the joint committees earlier, so anytime you want me to come into a subcommittee of council, too, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going back to item seven, message from the county executive.
Good after, or good evening, or good afternoon. A couple of things. First of all, the big news today, of course, was the First of all, the big news today, of course, was the governor submitted his budget proposal to the legislature, and the details of it are still kind of dribbling out. There were some broad, some broad parameters that were released. We don't have all of the relevant numbers, except as expected, it's going to affect us, assuming that it's adopted in either its current form or substantially similar to its current form. So I won't go into all the details. We have our budget staff that is going through it, and also various directors that are looking at how the funding formulas may change for them. I can tell you just a couple highlights, is that the local government fund, which we get about $32, $33 million a year from, is going to be cut by, according to this proposal, and this may change, but the proposal is to cut it by 25% for fiscal year 12, so that would start mid-year. So that means if you took 25%, that'd take about $8 million, that would be a $4 million effect for this calendar year, since we budget by the calendar year. And then, you know, that would result in a $4 million reduction for calendar year, the following calendar year also. And then a 50% cut in the neck for fiscal year, fiscal year 2013. So that's, you know, a 16, a little bit more than a $16 million cut, once that goes into effect. So that's a major, that's obviously going to be a major blow, that we're going to have to try to figure out a way to address that. There are other cuts that have been made, but we're still going through them. There have been some cuts across the board of around 10% in various human services functions, and we're still, we're still kind of, we're still kind of digging into those. There have been some other changes in the budget regarding Medicaid. It gets very complicated with the formula, and again, we're going to be trying to get to that information as quick as possible. The next thing, of course, that it's important to do is to advocate for our point of view before this budget is passed as aggressively as we can. So we'll be working with our team and going down to Columbus, and I'd also would extend an invitation to the council members, a couple of whom, of course, are former legislators and know some folks down there and know the system. So it probably makes sense for us to have those conversations in the next 48 hours and try to come up with a game plan of how we might affect it. I could just say, you know, kind of my initial impression is, it isn't going to work if we just go down there and say, "We've been cut, don't cut us." That's not going to happen. Actually, that's something that Governor Kasich has said on a number of occasions. There's an enormous deficit that they're facing, and something is going to be cut. But if we can look at the way the cuts were done, and if there's a more rational way or more equitable way to realize savings, I think we'll have more success, we'll have more success there. A couple other things, just generally, I'll be giving a state-of-the-county address on April 6 at noon at the Marriott. It's being sponsored by the city club. I would, I'd be honored if you would attend. And any suggestions you might have, please feel free to let me know. And I think that's it. We're going to be busy on deciphering the impact of these state cuts, and we will give you as much information as we have as quickly as we have it. Thank you.
Madam President, I would move that Rule Number 9D requiring that legislation be heard at three different regular council meetings, and Rule Number 13A requiring reference to committee be suspended, and that Resolution Number 2011-0106 be placed on consideration for passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Brady. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? You have a discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This appears to be something that has been around for a long time, and why the need to expedite the speed of this is, and waive the rules and the suspension of the rules, the purpose of that is for an expedited hearing, and in this particular case, this has been something that's been around for years. And so I just would advocate that we do not use this procedure every time when items of this nature come up.
Mr. Brady.
Councilman, Councilman Schran, this was brought to us in front of the Health and Human Services Committee, and we had an extensive conversation and had a strong consensus on the committee to support this resolution, which was brought to us by Mr. Dennehan for obvious reasons. And then, just as importantly, if not more importantly, the county executive had, has expressed an interest in the council passing this resolution. So I believe that we've already heard it extensively in committee, that there was a consensus that it be moved out of committee. And I think the timing of it, yes, this, the story, this issue has, one that has gone back quite a ways, but we are at a point now where only in the last few weeks, a decision has been either made or suggested by the new governor, and we are responding to that, that decision that is only a few weeks ago, and we believe that if there's any chance, I believe that if there's any chance of saving this development, that we need to move as quickly as possible.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll on the motion for suspension of the rules.
Suspending the rules, Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schran.
No.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Mr. Greenspan.
No.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion carries to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution Number 2011-0106, a resolution opposing the decisions of the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Governor John Kasich to close the Cleveland campus of North Coast Behavioral Healthcare and to abstain from construction of a new state mental health hospital in Cleveland, urging the governor and the director of the Department of Mental Health to reconsider these decisions and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Madam President, to my colleagues, the decision that was announced would leave Cuyahoga County without a...
Yeah, you, I'm waiting, are you making a motion? Yeah, I'm waiting for you to make a motion.
Move to that.
Second.
All right, so moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Simon. All right, proceed, Mr. Miller.
Madam President and my colleagues, the decision that was announced would leave Cuyahoga County without a public mental health inpatient hospital, and I think it would have a devastating effect in terms of quality of care and the ability to have an effective mental health treatment system in the county. And I, it would be helpful if we could all get behind this and give it our best shot. I'm not real optimistic, because they seem to have their minds made up, but we should try. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I just want to echo that. What's important here is to understand that I believe the statistic is that 90-plus percent of the patients that would have been in this hospital are from Cleveland. And to ship them out to almost a different county makes no reasonable sense whatsoever. The families are here, their stability is here. It's going to impose hardships on the families to find transportation at times, to go visit their relatives. It's going to alienate the patients, and it's certainly contrary to the progress that these patients have seen in the past decade, to progress toward mainstreaming them. Instead, they're being shipped out. I think it makes no sense. I think it's debilitating to the families as well as the city of Cleveland. And the timeliness, I think, is important, because what we've seen from the proposed budget cuts today is consistent with what we see now, is a plan, at least the effect of this budgeting is going to impact our cities proper in ways that we've never imagined. So this is just a tipping point, as well as the state tax that we debated endlessly. I don't want to bring that up. But on every level of our community, in the cities, in the families, the middle class, this is just another indication of how we are being treated by the state. So I definitely support this, not only for the families, for the patients, but for our city and our community and the middle class. So I definitely support this and ask my colleagues to come aboard.
Mr. Greenspan, Mr. Gallagher.
Great, thank you, Madam President. First of all, let me start my statement by saying that I would like to see this facility here in the county. However, we're 14 and a half months too late. The contract, and finally, Mr. Dennehan never presented us with any of the information we asked for. I talked to Director Plow this morning in the governor's office. I have the letter of intent, it expired 12/31/09. So this comes as no surprise to anyone in the last 14 and a half months that this project would not move forward within Cleveland or Cuyahoga County. It troubles me that we're engaging in this at this point on a number of levels. The information provided to me by the, by Columbus significantly changes the number, the percentage of Cuyahoga County residents that are impacted, from anywhere between 67% to 72% of the patients or consumers, as this resolution states, are from Cuyahoga County. And within Cleveland residents, it's only 64% of the total Cleveland residents for fiscal year 2010 that were serviced by the facility. Once again, needless to say, I'm still in favor of the facility and would like to see it here in the county, but I don't think that we have been presented with all the factual information as a body. I was, and I must not have been aware that this was discussed in Health and Human Services, otherwise I would have addressed this, addressed this at that time to that body. But I don't know if this is our fight to fight at this point, since this contract has been effectively dead for 14 and a half months. There's a statement in here that, in the resolution, that the state does not actually save any money in my discussions this morning with the director. The state anticipates having to spend an additional $10 million to remediate the soil, which is not done, which was not done in the original letter of intent between the city and the state. So that obviously is an initial impact, and the state also estimates by consolidating the facilities, whether it be in Summit County or in Cuyahoga County, would save an annual amount of $4 million a year through the consolidation process. So obviously, there is a financial impact in here. I don't know where the vote's going to turn on this. I would, though, however, request that the vote and the members' votes be recorded in the resolution as it's presented to Columbus.
Mr. Pistor.
Well, sure, a couple of things. One is, this has not been dead as a Cleveland project for 14 months. That's not correct. There was a deadline that expired, but I can tell you, the previous gubernatorial administration and Mayor Jackson's administration still considered it to be going forward. It wasn't until the new administration said, "Well, it's expired, and now we're going to move it somewhere else." There's nothing precluding them from continuing with the project and renewing it. It's just like having an option on a property. The option may expire, but doesn't mean the deal is dead unless one of the parties changes their mind. What happened here was, one of the parties changed their mind, being the governor's administration. As far as it saving money, the point in terms of it not saving money is that the deficit that Columbus is struggling with is not being addressed by this move. They're capital funds, and they're going to be moved into other capital projects. And I think you're, I think you're mistaken if you think that those capital funds are going to be used in other Cuyahoga County projects, and they're not. I mean, look, there are certain things, I'll tell you what, I don't have, the reason that I'm comfortable in co-sponsoring this, and there are other things that the governor does that I don't agree with, that I don't try to sponsor resolutions to disagree with is, I don't think it's my job to sit in the stands and critique everything that he does that I may not agree with for whatever reason. But when it's something that affects Cuyahoga County residents in particular, and when they're making choices with tax dollars that had already been committed here, and then they're going to move them in another direction, that are going to directly impact the lives of residents in every single one of your districts, because mental illness has, there's no part of the community that it doesn't touch, then I think it makes sense for us. What we've got to figure out in these difficult budget times is, when does it make sense for us to try to be heard as a body? Now, is, does everything that the state is doing, or everything that Governor Kasich is doing, does it make sense for us to sound off on every single one of them? No. But when there's a project like this that is so specific, and where the public health case for it is so compelling, where every expert would tell you that it doesn't make sense to have people distanced from their family support network and put them out in a far suburban location, it just doesn't make sense from a public health standpoint. And so I think on these issues, like I said before, when we talked about how are we going to interact with Governor Kasich's administration, it makes sense to pick and choose what issues that we want to be heard on. And this one, the reason that I was very comfortable in co-sponsoring this is, this one, I think, does. I know people can disagree, but this one, I think it really does. And I think it would be helpful if the council would be as united as possible on it. I also, I don't think that this decision is completely done yet. And, you know, there's still, there's still some hope that, there's been such an outpouring of concern over this from health providers all over the political spectrum, that maybe there is a chance that this decision, which is not irrevocable, will be reconsidered. Thank you.
I'd just like to reflect and then think of the faces that I saw the years that I was a judge, of people who should have been in a mental hospital, and that we incarcerated them just because we had no place else to send them. And so we have this huge population in the county jail that, by all rights, should be in some mental health facility. So, I mean, that's a direct impact on our community also. All right, anything else, Mr. Greenspan?
Madam President, thank you. Once again, I just want to state, I'm not, I would like this facility to be here. Let me just make that statement clear. I just want to clarify possibly some of my statements earlier. The additional, the $10 million that I was referring to is not in the $90 million that's been appropriated. It's going to have to be an additional $10 million that would have to be appropriated. As the director explained to me on the phone this morning, the agreement ended formally on 12/31/09. There were further discussions between the city and the state to continue the project. However, the city was, wanted to change some of the terms of the letter of intent to increase the cost of the project from $150,000 an acre to handle some of the excess remediation costs that Mr. Dennehan even spoke of as being necessary to move the project forward. The state at that point, as I understand it, was interested in extending the term of the letter of intent, but not the, changing the terms of the letter of intent. And as it was explained to me, this agreement terminated on 12/31/09, and there was no further, there was no further understanding between the parties. It was acknowledged that the seat of Cleveland did act in good faith to try to, with the expectation of being able to secure this facility, and they continued work into 2010, but they did so effectively at their own peril and with no agreement with the state. So I just wanted to provide clarity if I misrepresented some of the facts as they were explained to me this morning. But I would like to see this facility here. I just don't know if it's possible at this point, based on the tough financial constraints, and at least the explanation provided me from Columbus was solely based on an economic, the economic environment of today's culture.
All right, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was on the Health and Human Services panel when we had this discussion. I don't think it's dead myself. I would hope that there's room for negotiations. And one of my questions was alternative sites, and evidently, we had two toxic sites and one site in a neighborhood that the neighborhood decided they didn't want it. So it seemed to me that both sites here seem to need to wake up a little bit, which is why I'm going to support this. It seems to me that, and I believe Metro Health just got some land from the state regarding a mental health facility. There may be an opportunity there to negotiate that land with a cleanup. It sounds to me like the problem with the Cleveland land was that the land wasn't remediated, or was, and then they found... or was, and then they found more toxic problems with the groundwater, and if it's in the groundwater, that site's literally dead, at least a hospital site. So I would hope that Mr. Dennehan would give us the information that we requested, that we have not received, which I think would be only helpful to us and fair to all, and that we, as best we can, stay together on this, because while there are problems on both sides of this, I think ultimately, having this facility in Cleveland proper would be the best for all of our constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Schron.
Thank you, and I too am in favor of the facility being in our location. I just think that we need to be very conscious, as our county executive said in his comments before this actually dialogue was raised, was we do not want to get in a series of saying no's to the budget as we see it coming down. We need to look at it in the totality of that it's being presented, because no matter what item is being cut, you're going to see that there will be a constituency that's against any element within that budget. So I think we have to be extremely careful. We will lose complete impact. This is the third resolution of this nature that's coming before this council, and which we're going to be sending down. My impression will be a no to the budget in the way that it's being built out there. I am clearly in favor of the idea of what we're talking about. Having been probably the only one on this panel that's actually developed a brownfield, I can tell you that the costs that are uncertain are so, are set that way, because you don't know what's going to be found during the remediation process out there. And that the costs do go up, they go up, and sometimes exponentially when you have to do that. I think I'm very concerned that this item itself can go the way of some of our other, of the other recent development that we just all looked at about a week ago Friday, where the costs started going up and up and up. And I think that they have, that this has a potential to get out of hand, and when you talk about it not having a budgetary effect, I just really hope that that was part of the Health and Human Services discussion as to its full impact, not just from the ideological standpoint, but from the actual total cost, when we say it doesn't have any impact on cost drivers. We just had a presentation a few minutes ago about regionalism. Regionalism is not going to be just Cuyahoga County as we look at it, if we're truly going to look at it. We need to be looking at, the concept of regionalism is going to be moving into multi-counties and multi-aspects. So I think that there are a lot of components to this. I will be supporting it, the actual resolution as it comes out, but I am concerned about the trend.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
The resolution, Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan.
No.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the resolution is adopted, and I assume that will be forwarded to the appropriate authorities. Are there any miscellaneous committee reports? No miscellaneous committee reports?
Madam President, I was going to give a discussion on ethics. I'd like to defer that to a future meeting.
All right. And is it correct that you will not be, we will not be having a Ethics Rules Committee meeting next Tuesday?
Correct. There will be a town hall meeting in Warrensville Heights tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the library, if any members of council wish to attend.
Yes, is there any...
Madam President.
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I would like to bring to everybody's attention and the executive's attention that on Monday, I appointed an advisory subcommittee of the Finance Committee to work with the administration and help present our concerns to Columbus. And the committee consists of three members of council chaired by Councilman Gallagher and four leading members of the community. Thank you.
Do you want to put those names on the record?
The chair again is Councilman Mike Gallagher, and the vice chair is Councilperson Jack Schron, and also Chuck Germana will be a member, and also Danita Love, who is the president of the Northeast Ohio City Councils Association, and the Reverend Larry Makin Jr. with the Mount Zion of Oakwood Village, and Thomas P. Percyak, the mayor of Strongsville, and Marty McGann, who is the vice president of governmental relations with the Greater Cleveland Partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Madam President, we have the Public Works Committee tomorrow at 2:00. We want to look at our ordinance draft for procurement and contracting. We expect to have it in subcommittee and committee, just one more time before it's sent to the committee as a whole at our regular meeting.
All right, Mr. Schron.
Yes, next week, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting at 2:00. It'll be an hour earlier than what historically has been at the 3:00 time slot on Monday. It'll start at 2:00 and go till 5:00. We have a very busy agenda. Mr. Kelly has put, we have four items specifically that we'll be discussing as far as resolution actions that were referred to committee, one of which I think is very exciting in the form of overdrive entertainment and Blue Sky Campus that'll be discussed. But in addition, we will be having, Mr. Jeff Applebaum will be talking about the sequel to our original presentation, which is the son of design-build out there as far as the movie sequel, which I will not be discussing anything about the pyramids or any of that. We're going to stick strictly on that last piece of the segment. But what's also exciting is, following that, will be somebody from the Construction Employers Association, Bob Strickland, and Dominic Ortiz will be there for talking about, I just, I would have confirmed that with you earlier, but I just got the confirmation before coming here that they were going to be available. So that'll be exciting, because that'll be the precursor, as we've had some discussions about a joint piece of legislation that the county executive and I will be bringing forth very soon. And if you'll notice, in the budget, there is a component that talks about construction reform that's in the budget that came out today. So this will be very exciting for us. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ray.
The Health and Human Services Committee will be meeting at 1:00 on Thursday to take up resolutions and ordinances that have been sent to committee. We will also continue presentations by the Department of Health and Human Services. We will be, the Health and Human Services Committee will be meeting weekly at 1:00. We've got a lot of ground to cover, as well as any resolutions or ordinances that may be sent to our committee. So for the next couple of months at least, we'll be meeting once a week at 1:00. Meetings will not last any longer than two hours to hear presentations by a wide variety of people involved in delivering Health and Human Services here in the county.
Ms. Conwell.
Dan, is that starting on the 17th, every week from that point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I take it you will not be walking in the parade on the 17th?
That's correct.
All right, are there any other miscellaneous, any other committee reports? We were scheduled on Item 11 to have an executive session regarding pending litigation. That has been canceled. We will be taking it up at the next meeting. Is there any miscellaneous business to discuss? All right, is there any public comment? I believe that we had one person that signed in.
Yes, Madam President, Sheila Howard has signed in.
All right, and you have two minutes, and you may come to the podium.
Well, I don't know what I am to say, or am not to say, but this is my first meeting to attend here. I'm here to attend three meetings to figure out how legislative bodies do what it is that they do, and how they take into consideration the people that they serve. And so I will be doing a paper. It's very interesting what you discuss here. I think beyond this project, I will probably plan to just kind of stop in and observe. I just have a passion for legislation. I have a passion for looking out for the needs and the well-being of others. So I thank you for this opportunity to have me here. I'm just surprised that, you know, more people from the community don't come here and be a voice for their own needs. I don't know if this is the format for that, but I would think it would be, because you're making decisions in legislation on behalf of the people that live in Cuyahoga County, but, you know. So I'd like to believe that, you know, that their interest and their needs, you know, get to your attention as they should be, but thank you.
And what kind of class this is?
This is a social policy class.
At Cleveland State?
Pardon me?
At Cleveland State?
At Cleveland State. I'm a student at Cleveland State, trying to reinvent myself, unemployed, out of work. So I'm working on a degree in nonprofit administration with a minor in psych and having some interest in social work and policy. So I'm taking a social work policy class and human behavior and the environment. It's very interesting. I really love it. Now I just want to go back, get my master's in social work, and, you know, move forward from there. But, you know, I've enjoyed it. Thanks for having me. I'll be back on Thursday for your Health and Human Services Committee meeting.
And it's Sheila Howard, she didn't, some people didn't catch your name.
Oh, Sheila Howard, yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Howard. Appreciate you coming. Anybody else have any comments? Next, yes, Mr. Miller.
Madam President, back in December, when we were still in our transition process, and we were designing the public comment system, we had visions of hordes of people coming in, and to the public, "We're here, we're open for you," but it hasn't happened yet.
Okay. Next week, everybody better eat a big lunch, go to bed early the night before. Fortunately, there will not be a Rules Committee, because we have a very long agenda for next Tuesday. I think we have, Madam Clerk, how many do we have already?
Thirty items with another.
So you need to rest up your voice, and maybe we'll waive the rule where you have to read all this stuff. But yeah, we have a lot on the agenda. We'll be starting with a work session at 4:00, and then a regular meeting at 6:00. And then on Thursday, the 24th, 9:00 AM, we will have the confirmation hearing for the director of Development, Mr. Larry Bender. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Second? All those in here say aye?
Aye.
All right, this is a record, our shortest meeting.